Good evening. This is the regular City Commission meeting for the City of Largo for Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if you have a cellphone, please turn it off or to silent so that we don't have any interruptions. We're going to start this evening's meeting with an invocation given by Pastor Mike Dukes from Judah First Christian Ministries, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Eternal Father, we thank you. We thank you for giving us another day. We thank you for this City Commission right now. We pray right now, Lord, that you give them wisdom in decisions they have to make. We pray for the ones that are speaking today, Father, and that you will guide their thoughts as well, and everything will just be working in order. We thank you, Lord, that you cover us. You're covering us through these pandemic times, through these new times, electronics that we have to use, Lord, but just keep us in the right place and keep us in peace, Lord. We thank this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Dukes. It's always good to see you. The first item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation.
Whereas, community planning is a continuous cycle because change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, rural areas, and other places; and whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play by way of designing, creating, and maintaining the interrelated planning system; and whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices and creating a vision that determines the future of their community; and whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation; and whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories; and whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contribution sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our cities and environment; and whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the City of Largo Planning Board, the Community Development Advisory Board, and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Largo; and whereas, this year, the American Planning Association has chosen to celebrate the theme of "Planning is Essential to Recovery," which highlights how planning and planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery from the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic; and whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional planners in the City of Largo and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to the public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the City of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Community Planning Month in the City of Largo in conjunction with celebration of National Community Planning Month.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. My name is Alicia Perrinello. I am a principal planner with the City of Largo's Community Development Department. It is a privilege to present you this proclamation declaring October 2020 to be Community Planning Month. Every October, planners from across the country join forces to educate the media, public, and elected officials about the role of planners and planning in creating community spaces we love. Planners work to improve the well-being of all people living in our communities by taking a comprehensive perspective. This year's theme for National Community Planning Month is "Planning is Essential to Recovery." The Planning and Development Services Division within the Community Development Department aims to provide superior customer service despite changing circumstances of the pandemic. Efforts have been made to transition to safer virtual meetings, improve accessibility for all, accept electronic documents, and respond to executive orders in a timely manner. For instance, planning initiated and expedited temporary outdoor seating review process to accommodate businesses affected by the capacity and distance requirements of Florida's COVID-19 reopening phases. Planners play an essential role in both short-term and long-term recovery process for the community. Mayor, City Commission, and citizens of Largo, please help us recognize and celebrate National Planning Month and the many valuable contributions made by the professional planners in the City of Largo. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have citizens' comments. I wanted to mention before we got started as well, there, if you're looking at the five of us up here, Commissioner Smith is also here, but we're seated six feet apart. So he's over where the city clerk typically sits, and Commissioner Finger is joining us from home via Zoom. So there are seven of us here, although one is virtually here. If you would like to speak on something that's on the agenda outside of the consent docket, please wait until item comes up. Do we have any cards for?
I have no cards for citizen comment.
Okay, thank you. Next is approval of the agenda.
Move/approval, second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 6th, 2020.
Move/approval, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item four, reappointments of Beverly Jean Gatewood and Anita McHenry as members of the Community Development Advisory Board. Item five, reappointments of Melissa Honeycutt and Penny Janowski as members of the Recreation Parks and Arts Advocacy Board. Item six, appointment of Jesse Scott and the reappointment of Roxanna Marsh as members of the Code Enforcement Board. Item seven, reappointments of Gay Gentry and Valerie Hibbard as members of the Finance Advisory Board. Item eight, authorization to purchase metal front-loading dumpsters and metal roll-off containers from Iron Container LLC and the estimated amount of $184,400 in accordance with City of Lakeland bid number 8257, annual supply of metal front-loading dumpsters and roll-off containers. Item nine, authorization to purchase garbage carts, recycling carts, and cart replacement parts from Rarick Pacific Company in accordance with the Omnia Partners Master Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchasing Agreement and Miami-Dade County Contract Number 00254 and the estimated amount of $75,000. Item 10, Resolution Number 2283, a moratorium on the collection of temporary event fees for the month of November 2020 (Largo Small Business Month). Item 11, authorization to accept funding from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program grant for the Bayhead Complex reconstruction project in the amount of $200,000. Item 12, authorization to apply for grant funding through the Department of Environmental Protection, Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program for enhancements to the White Soul Complex in the amount up to $50,000. Item 13, authorization to renew request for Proposal Number 17-P-585, Street Tree Planting, to Bay Area Professional Lawn Care Incorporated in the amount of $100,000 for a two-year period. Item 14, authorization to approve the Piggyback Agreement for the purchase of sodium hypochlorite from Odyssey Manufacturing Company in accordance with the City of Tallahassee bid ITB Number 0009-18RM-BC in the estimated amount of $400,000. Item 15, approval of extension of the contract with Southern Automation and Controls for System Integrator Services under bid number 17-B-586 for a two-year period and the estimated total amount of $330,000. Item 16, authorization to purchase sodium bisulfite from Thatcher Chemical of Florida Incorporated in accordance with Lee County bid number B180243RJD in the estimated amount of $125,000. Item 17, award of option year one for bid number 19-B-645, trenchless sanitary and storm sewer rehabilitation to BLD Services LLC, Enviro Waste Services Group Incorporated, Granite Inliner LLC, Hinterland Group Incorporated, and Situform Technologies LLC, JTV Incorporated, LMK Pipe Renewal LLC, Miller Pipeline LLC, Vortech Services LLC, and authorization for fiscal year 2021 spending in the estimated amount of $1,750,100. Item 18, approval of the emergency expenditure for the repair of the Andritz Belt Filter Press to PSI Technologies Incorporated in the amount of $141,109.10.
You've heard the consent docket. Could I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent docket without commission discussion and including staff background provided in the commission packets.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. I would like to point out, I can't see everybody's face out in the audience because there's people wearing masks, so I'd like to thank Ms. Gatewood, Beverly Gatewood, Anita McHenry, Melissa Honeycutt, Penny Janowski, Jesse Scott, Roxanna Marsh, Gay Gentry, and Valerie Hibbard for volunteering to help us make important decisions on advisory boards for the City of Largo. So thank you for your service to the city. Next up is item number 19.
Good evening. This is the termination of DA 14-01, a development agreement between the City of Largo and Dockside Investors LLC. The applicant is requesting to terminate the existing development agreement DA 1401 for approximately 13.65 acres. I have a presentation and should pull up in just a second. It's located at 12766 Street North and designated as commercial general future land use. If you could, thank you. Great. Okay, this is showing you the location at 12766 Street North, and just in case you didn't catch that, it was 13.65 acres. The next slide shows you, this is the development that is currently on the site as part of the development agreement. The development agreement was executed between the City of Largo and Dockside Investors and DBW Enterprises, Inc. on February 6th, 2014 for the construction of 258 Dwelling Unit Apartment Complex. The apartment complex was permitted and constructed in compliance with the terms and conditions of the agreement. The final certificate of occupancy was issued in November 2017. BF Core MF 12766 Street North LLC became the successor in interest to the DA 1401 and submitted the attached compliance report to document the completion of the agreement in accordance with Section 14.9 of DA 14-01 with the request to terminate the development agreement. If approved, the existing apartment complex development will become subject to all existing codes, and the terms of the development agreement will no longer be in effect, considering that the development is essentially built out. Terminating or revoking the agreement will not result in any impact to the property or immediate area. The planning board reviewed the proposed DA 1401 termination on October 1st, 2020, and recommended approval 7-0. Staffs available for questions, and the applicant is also present.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on this item? Do we have any cards on this item first?
I have no cards.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to approve the termination of DA 14-01, a development agreement between the City of Largo, Florida, and Dockside Investment, VIILC.
Second.
I did have a couple of questions. We do have a motion and a second, but I did have a couple of questions. Is there anything that the property owner is required to have or maintain that would go away as a result of eliminating this development agreement going forward?
So, the elimination of the development agreement isn't going to have an immediate impact, but it is going to sever that agreement for any future development or changes to the site. So now they would have to be compliant with the current code requirements. I'm not aware of any requests, but our applicant is here to speak to intent on the property.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Mayer of the law firm Hillward Henderson 101 East Kennedy Boulevard Suite 3700 in Tampa. The only change that would occur based on this is we're going to be subject to all of the current zoning, commercial general zoning requirements, and the footprint of the building isn't going to change. The only thing that's going to change is they're going to turn to existing offices into new units because the unit count will go up once they're under the commercial general zoning district rather than the current terms of the DA.
Okay, and this is probably for staff again, but I understand that with a development agreement, this one was going to go for 30 years, and that would require some work both for the property owner as well as for the city each year in perpetuity for those 30 years. So would this, you know, knowing that the site is essentially built out, to the development agreement, it's going to, will it lessen the work on both sides?
So, the, as far as the developer's side goes, the developers done every, they've met all of their terms under the development agreement, and so we prepared the required affidavit of compliance, which kind of listed all of the different things that we've done to meet all of the terms of the development agreement. So it wouldn't really lessen anything for the developer because they've already done everything.
Okay. So then the motivation for the developer to end this development agreement is what? Just those two units?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your help. I do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I didn't see Commissioner Finger.
Aye.
Thank you. I heard her just now. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next up is item number 20.
See if my presentation comes up. Good evening, Mayor and City Commission and City Manager. This is the second and final reading of Ordinance 2020-37, proposing to amend the future land use classification of property totaling 4.34 acres located at 4825 East Bay Drive. The future land use map amendment will change the property from an institutional land use category to residential office retail. The proposed future land use map amendment and an associated development agreement, DA 20-01, was reviewed and recommended for approval by the planning board on July 2nd, 2020. The development agreement allowed for the property to be redeveloped with restrictions on some of the intensive commercial uses. City Commission approved these items at first reading on August 4th, 2020, and the Tier Two Small-Scale Fluma was unanimously approved by the countywide planning authority on October 6th, 2020. There have been no changes since first reading. Staff recommends approval of the proposed flume amendment and is available for questions, and the applicant also is here.
Ordinance Number 2020-37, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Classification of the within-described tracts of land located at 4825 East Bay Drive from institutional parentheses I to residential office retail parentheses ROR, consistent with the City of Largo Comprehensive Plan, amending the future land use map on file in the office of the city clerk pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 163, Part II, Florida statutes, and the Pinellas Countywide Plan rules, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to adopt ordinance Number 2020-37 on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is item number 21.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Mark Myers. I'm the facilities manager, and I am here tonight to present, excuse me, present the fire station design on, excuse me. In 2015, a study was conducted on the needs and the conditions of our existing fire stations. As a result of that, they identified that there were three stations that needed replacement in the very near future. Those stations were Station 38, 39, and 42. The project team that was assembled for this project was to review RFQ information to develop a ranking of our designers. As a result of that, we have selected Wanamaker Jensen as our number-one ranked firm. Our group was comprised of fire personnel, public works personnel, and administrative personnel in this process. We have spent the last several months negotiating the scope and fee, which is in this, and we urge your approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions? Commissioner Holmes.
Hi, Mark.
Good evening.
If we conducted this study five years ago, we knew five years ago that this needed to be done. So we've waited five years when it got a little more expensive before doing something about this. But my question is, 38, 39, 42, we've known that. We just did 43. Why don't we use the blueprints off of 43? I mean, most of these, 38, 39, and 42 are approximately the same size as 43. I mean, 43's got three bays now. 42 only has two. Anyway, why don't you use 43's blueprint instead of spending another, you know, basically half a million dollars for another study per se?
Station 43 has a design similar to what the other stations need. There's, as you're well aware, there's different components at the different stations. You have apparatuses for this, you have the chemical response team, et cetera, et cetera. What Wanamaker Jensen is going to do is they're going to come in, and they're going to look at all the stations, and they're going to say, okay, these are all the needs that we have to have in a prototype facility. Now, we didn't do that with 43. 43, we designed it as we planned. With this, we're looking at, in the future, what is it that we need to do so we don't have to do this one time? And hopefully, we can use these plans on other sites as we replace it.
Why don't we ask the people who are going to use these stations? I'm sure we have the brain power within the fire department that, I mean, I'm not diminishing what architects could do, but I'm saying, with the people who will be using the apparatus, who will be using the structure, why don't we go to them first and ask them? I mean, I understand even, you know, we've got county trucks that are parked outside and things like that. I don't think you're going to feed them inside, they're too big. But why don't we go to the fire department first?
Well, the fire department's going to be included on the front end of this as we start the design so that we can include everything that they need.
And I might want to add to that, that yes, clearly, the fire personnel will be very much involved in the design. This is more than just a study. It's actually the development of a plan for a master fire station design that could be used at multiple sites, and it does include the construction documents for the first station. So this is the complete design of the station, and I believe it also includes the contract administration?
That's correct.
Phase also.
All right. Continuing on this, so this, basically, you're going to have the set done for one station, correct? What is the timeline for the one station? And then the follow-up question immediately, what is the timeline, I mean, this is strictly budgeting, for the next two? You're not going to know that, Henry, should, might.
Mark can direct the answer maybe. The first one is when this station would be ready, how long the design, and then when it would start construction. The phasing of the other two stations is based on the revenues and the penny for Pinellas Fund. We have three, these three fire stations are all included in the next 10 years, so they're, they'll probably be two or three years apart.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to address the specific mark on the first station.
As far as the timeline, we're looking for an eight-week design. We're looking for probably two to three months for construction documents, and then we will start construction once those are approved. In this project, we'll be coming back to get a C Mar within the near future.
What are you going to do first, 38?
Right now, the station that has been identified as first replacement will be Station 39.
Okay. That's another question. Henry, Station 39, isn't that property, that's our property, but it's a county station, correct? Or is it the other way around?
No, it's actually our property and our station, although it's located in the unincorporated area.
Okay, but isn't that the one we were talking about, moving it to?
Yes, we are in conversations with Pinellas County about possibly relocating the station to a site immediately to the north of the Health Department facility in Ridgecrest.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve professional service agreement and scope and fee to Wanamaker Jensen Architects, Inc. for design of new fire station in the amount of $430,327.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion, pardon me, passes 7-0. Thank you. Next up is item number 22.
The city administration has been working on a financing plan for the new city hall construction, and we will be bringing a preliminary plan to the City Commission at the work session next month for discussion. Since we won't be borrowing money probably until much closer to actual construction, this resolution tonight grants the authority for the city to reimburse itself from any future borrowing for any costs that are incurred until we do the main borrowing. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Resolution Number 2282, a resolution of the City of Largo, Florida, establishing its intent to reimburse certain capital expenditures incurred in connection with acquisition, construction, and equipping of the city's proposed city hall project with proceeds of a future tax-exempt financing or financings, providing certain other matters in connection therewith.
therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions?
I move to approve resolution number 2282.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is item number 23.
The item before you is a small-scale future land use map amendment for a 2.87-acre portion of a 17.9-acre tract of land located at 1755 or 556 U.S. Highway 19 North, owned by the Walker Ford Company. This site is generally located west of U.S. 19, south and east of Allen's Creek, and approximately .4 miles south of Bel Air Road. This exhibit shows the existing future land use surrounding the subject property and of the subject property at the center of the map with the red boundary. The applicant is requesting 2.87 acres of property classified as preservation, future land use. You can see here in the black hatched area. They're proposing to change that to residential office retail. If approved, the proposed overall 17.92-acre property would have 4.1 acres remaining in preservation, as you can see in this more detailed future land use map, and 13.82 acres in residential office retail. The future land use map amendment is considered a small-scale Tier Two amendment, and the countywide plan map will need to be amended from preservation to retail and services by the county. To orient you with this map, to the north is Jersey Jim Towers Appliance Site. It's designated commercial general and preservation as you move west. The southern boundary of the subject property immediately abuts a large multifamily apartment complex, The Columns, at Allen's Creek, designated residential medium. Abutting the Walker Ford property to the west is residential estate and preservation designated land uses, generally where the Kent Place neighborhood is located. And then similarly, large lot, single-family residential estate is further northwest of the preservation area to the north of this map. East of the property, the property abuts U.S. 19, and opposite of U.S. 19, you'll find Bayside Office Park and Cove K condominium complex, which are designated residential office, general, transportation utility, and commercial general respectively. This is a street view of the Walker Ford dealership, looking west from U.S. 19. In this slide, you see a detailed aerial of the 2.87-acre subject area, owned by Walker Ford and is currently used as a stormwater retention pond to treat runoff associated with the auto dealership. It is the applicant's intent to expand the existing auto dealership operations to accommodate additional inventory on site. The proposed use is not allowed under preservation land use classification. The dealership and the retention pond were developed in unincorporated Pinellas County in 1988. The stormwater pond was permitted by the Water Management District at the same, at that time, and the city later annexed this property in 2001. At the time of annexation, it was designated in the county also residential office, retail, This next slide shows a map of the countywide plan map categories, land use categories, and illustrates the development pattern in the vicinity of the subject property. Commercial general is the predominant future land use designation along this segment of U.S. 19, from Bel Air Road to Whitney Road. There's also a mix of higher-density residential properties, residential medium, residential low-medium, along this corridor. The dashed line that you see on this exhibit shows a transition from higher-density land use designations to the east, transitioning to much lower density to the west. If I can get this slide to advance. I'm not sure what's happening. This next slide shows the city's future land use categories overlaid on an aerial to further illustrate this transition from higher urban den, okay, my slides are jumping back and forth, I apologize, from higher urban densities to the east along U.S. 19, and then the lower-density areas generally are residential estate to the west. The applicant conducted an environmental review of the Walker Ford property. Their report prepared by a professional consulting firm, environmental science associates, identified the jurisdictional wetlands described in their report as esterene intertidal wetland system directly connected to a wet linear ditch that runs along the southwest edge of the property limits. These jurisdictional wetlands generally follow the natural contours of the coastal high-hazard area, which you can see here in kind of a reddish-pink. The boundaries of the coastal high-hazard area are not, or rather, the subject area is not within the boundaries of the coastal high-hazard area or in the jurisdictional wetlands that the applicant's consultant had identified in their study. Additionally, that environmental assessment indicates that there are no state or federally listed species observed in the subject area.
Excuse me, we're having a little bit of technical difficulty.
Yes.
Can you just allow them to move the, to them to move it so that we don't lose Commissioner Finger?
I see.
When you do that, we lose her.
Okay.
Okay?
Technology.
Yes.
This last exhibit here shows the countywide plan map with the coastal high-hazard area overlaying. The preservation land use category on the countywide plan map is shown in dark green, and it generally follows the Allen's Creek natural contours as it moves from northeast to southwest. And it also shows, again, the 2.87-acre subject area outside of the coastal high-hazard area. So in conclusion, the land use change will facilitate the expansion of the existing Walker Ford dealership, and the proposed change is, on balance, generally consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Staff has received approximately 60 letters, emails, phone calls in opposition of the proposed change from residents from the Kent Place and Sharon Oaks neighborhoods, as well as the Donovan Mobile Home Park Cooperative. This item was heard by the planning board on October 1st, 2020. At the public hearing, there were several individuals from the residential neighborhoods present to speak in opposition. The planning board recommended approval of the request. If the commission approves this item tonight, the staff will transmit this to the county for their review and approval. If the countywide planning authority approves it, we anticipate the future land use map amendment will be presented to the city commission for second and final reading at a public hearing on February 16th, 2021. The applicant is present and would like to speak to the request, and there is also an individual in the audience that has requested to also make a presentation on behalf of some of the residents. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
Yes. Sorry, I meant to read it first. Ordinance number 2021-24, and ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Classification of the within-described tract of land located at 17556 U.S. Highway 19 North, from preservation (I) to residential office retail (ROR), consistent with the City of Largo Comprehensive Plan, amending the city future land use map on file in the office of the city clerk pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 163, Part II, Florida statutes, and the Pinellas Countywide Plan Rules, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I believe you mentioned the applicant would like to make a presentation, so we'll start with the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Katie Cole with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, representing the applicant. We do have a PowerPoint that the clerk has that I think she's bringing up that are just some exhibits. It's just for the rest of our speakers. Before, I did want to have some housekeeping items. Mr. Mayor, I had previously requested 15 to 20 minutes for the applicant's presentation as we have experts here who, to testify on this, and would hope that you, we could accommodate a set amount of time.
Is there preference by the commission? I'm fine with 20 minutes for all?
Yeah, combined. That would be the applicant's presentation.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Hopefully, it won't be that long, but we appreciate that.
Hopefully, there's a game later on.
Yeah, and then we all want to see game one. And secondly, I did provide resumes to the clerk and to each of you of our experts, and would request those experts be considered experts by this board for their testimony. It's Ms. Cynthia Terrapini as an expert planner, Mr. Street Lee as a professional engineer, and Mr. Bob Morelco as an environmental scientist. They can also each individually speak to their qualifications if you'd prefer, but I was trying to be concise. Do I need to?
No.
Okay. Sorry. They were looking, and I was waiting.
Okay. Well, I just want to say, this is not quasiadditional, so it's not a, you don't need to make a decision whether these people are experts or not, they want to present them as experts, but this is a legislative action on your behalf, so this is not, in a sense, testimony and evidence like we would do in a quasiadditional hearing, so you don't have to make a determination that they are qualified as experts.
Okay. Thank you.
You can just consider their background when you consider what they have to say.
Understood.
Mayor, I don't believe Samantha's got a copy of this.
I don't, I think we got these this afternoon, so I would suspect it.
So this one commissioner does not have it.
Thank you, sir. We did email them late this afternoon, but I brought hard copies as well, but you're right, Commissioner Finger probably did not receive the electronic versions from the clerk at this point. If she so would prefer, in an effort, as Mr. Zimmett said, in your vein of your decision, I can certainly have each of the experts recap their expertise prior to their testimony.
I think that, I think that we can, I don't think that we need that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, you've got 20 minutes.
Wonderful. So thank you all this evening, and as evidenced by the staff report, this request meets the criteria for an amendment to your comprehensive plan, both under your comprehensive development code and your comprehensive plan. You've obviously received a lot of correspondence from some of the neighbors, none of which addressed the goals, objectives, and policies of your comprehensive plan or the review criteria in the code. Rather, the neighbors wrongly assert that the preservation designation somehow equates to this being a, quote, "preserve." As evidenced in the application that was presented, this is not a preserve, it simply is green on a map. In fact, the existing use, as it is today and has always been since 1987, is not even consistent with what the City of Largo would allow in this land use designation today. The only land use designation that accommodates vehicle sales and service in your comprehensive development code and its associated stormwater facilities is ROR, which is what the applicant has requested today. Your code states that the preservation designation is appropriate for habitats and resources of environmental significance. As Mr. Morelco will testify, there is no environmental significance to the stormwater pond in a grassy area. I would like to introduce Mr. Morelco as an environmental scientist, and he's here tonight, and he's going to speak for a couple minutes, please.
If you want to scroll through. I think we wouldn't need the clerk to do so.
Yeah, I think we're fine. Hi, my name is Bob Mercalo. I'm a senior scientist with a environmental science associate. I delineated wetlands and surface waters on the property during, following state and federal criteria. I also did listed species survey. The property isn't in any Fish and Wildlife Service consultation area of federally listed species. We also did surveys for state listed species. We didn't see any signs of any state listed species or individuals. We surveyed the wooded area, and we also surveyed the stormwater pond itself, and the pond itself is just basically an open water system with no vegetation. It's surrounded by short mowed grass habitat that's surrounded by a chain-link fence, which is, majority of it's surrounded by invasive exotic Brazilian pepper. It's not even native to Florida. So we didn't find really anything out there when we were doing our surveys.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd now like to introduce Ms. Cindy Terrapini with Terrapini Planning to speak to the planning elements and the consistency with the plan.
That is, I think, excuse me, do we need to ask the clerk to advance the slides?
Yeah, otherwise we're going to.
Okay. You can have the clerk advance the slides, and then.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm happy to be here. Thank you for having us today in a live meeting. It's a pleasure to be in a real, live meeting as opposed to many of the virtual meetings we've all been doing. My name is Cindy Terrapini. I'm a land use planner. I'm the owner and authorized member for Terrapini Planning Service Strategies, and I'm located at 128 East Tarpon Avenue in Tarpon Springs. You have my resume, so as the mayor said, I'm qualified as an expert witness in the field of planning. The first slide that you see shows the Walker Ford dealership that's been located on this site since 1988, was developed and permitted through the Pinellas County and then annexed into the city in 2001. The size of the site when it was originally developed and the same size today with probably a little bit less on the east side for right away for U.S. 19 is the same then as it is today, approximately 18 acres. We could have the next slide, please. The eastern 11 acres of the site is designated with the ROR plan category, which, again, is the only plan category in which this dealership can operate as a legal use in that plan category. And that plan category is consistent with its location on U.S. 19, a major commercial corridor that travels throughout all of Pinellas County. The western 7 acres is designated with the preservation plan category, but only 2.87 of those acres are actually wetlands. The balance of it is a stormwater pond. We can go to slide three, please. Because of the demands for the Ford dealership and the changes in the business, Walker Ford needs additional area to park and store their car and truck inventory. The best place for them, as they've evaluated it from a business point of view, is to the rear of the buildings on the west portion of the site in the area currently used for the stormwater pond. Walker Ford and their engineering consultants have carefully considered the requirements to convert the existing stormwater pond into the at-grade parking area and determine this is the best location to meet their business needs. It's physically possible. new system will have to go through the permitting processes with both the city and SWIFTMUD. This new system is shown on the concept plan that's a little later in the presentation, but we are well aware that we have to go through that process. But in order to construct this option, the plan amendment is needed, and that's why we're here tonight. What we are asking to do is to reduce the plan amendment area for preservation to only what's actual preservation, which is the wetlands. And the applicant has hired an ecologist to survey those wetlands. He's testified to you earlier that that line, the green that you see on the north and then wrapping around the west and southern, that is the wetland area and the buffer for the wetlands. Those wetlands on the site will be maintained with that preservation plan category on the north edge of the site, next to Allen's Creek, on the west edge of the site, and on the southern end of the property. The boundary -- the western boundary, the depth of that preservation plan category will be 54 feet in width. To the west of that, off of our site, is a 40-foot wide right away that's unimproved right away. So therefore, the separation between the one house that's immediately adjacent to Walker Ford dealership and the -- between the house and the dealership will be a total of 94 feet. Not only will there be this significant distance, but that area, and I'll show you in a few seconds the photographs, but that area is composed of a natural buffer today with mature tall trees and landscaping that will prevent any noise, any possible noise or visibility of the site. We can move to slides -- the next slide, please. This is just very briefly to show you the wetland line has been surveyed on the site. The next slide, please. Again, just an aerial showing the yellow line is the new wetland line. Everything north and west of that is the new wetland area. And the last -- next slide, please. Again, this is just a little hard to see at the scale, but just to show that it is only the western edge of the site that abuts residential. And again, there's only one house immediately adjacent to the Walker Ford dealership on the west side of the property. The city's code establishes the criteria for you to decide when you're deciding on a plan amendment such as this. The city's planning staff has compared this request to the criteria and found that it meets all that criteria. Your local planning agency also recommended approval of this application. And as a professional planner, I have evaluated this application against the standards in your code and found that it meets all those standards. I'm not going to duplicate the staff's discussion because it was quite detailed and thorough. I do want to point out a couple of things. With regard to the future land use map, if we could go to the next slide, please. As everybody is -- this just shows the landscape buffer that will be installed on the project. Next slide, please. Again, the buffer table that we are well aware will be in compliance with the City of Largo's code. Next slide, please. Again, this just shows, and your staff showed you this one as well, we're all well aware that U.S. 19 is a major commercial corridor, and as you might imagine, the commercial and ROR plan categories are predominant along that corridor. Walker Ford has been located on this commercial corridor since 1988, and the configuration of that property, the same size of the property extending to the same western edge, has been there since 1988. This proposed amendment to ROR is consistent with the other commercial plan categories and the commercial pattern along U.S. 19. And as Ms. Cole noted, the existing stormwater pond is not an allowable use in the preservation plan category, so is another reason to change this comp plan. With regard to goals, objectives, and policies, the staff has covered these very well, but I do want to emphasize the most relevant objective, which is Objective 1.1, which states, and I quote, "Promote sustainable land use patterns to ensure compatibility between the transportation network, existing neighborhoods, and new development." Well, how do we decide what -- how uses are compatible? The Florida state law defines compatibility as follows. Compatibility is a condition in which land uses or conditions can coexist in relative proximity to each other in a stable fashion over time such that no use or condition is unduly negatively impacted directly or indirectly by another use. So in other words, you look at the uses, look at their proximity to each other, and then thirdly, you look at any mitigating factors such as buffers, trees, a road intervening, or other land uses between them. So the type and the character of the two uses are different. Clearly, a Walker Ford is a commercial use, while the residential uses to the west are single-family residential use. The second factor to look at is how close are they to each other? As we've talked about earlier, they are at least -- the closest house is about 94 feet distant. That is composed of the 54 feet of wetland buffer and preservation plan category on our site that will not be allowed to be developed, a 40-foot right away, and then you come to the edge of the property line of the closest single-family house. The other houses in this area are -- start -- increase in distance from there, so that is only the closest house. Many of them, as you saw on the aerials, are substantially further than that. And then the third factor is, what are the mitigating factors? Well, in this particular case, as I mentioned, the mitigating factors are the -- not only the distance between those uses, but the fact that there is a buffer between them that exists today as a natural buffer, and you have that right away that will not be improved -- well, won't be approved with buildings, may be approved by a road at some point. But again, those two uses together form the natural and mitigating factors. We could go to the next few slides. I'd like to show you some photographs. This is again the standing on the Walker Ford site, looking northwest across the pond, the existing stormwater pond. You can see in the back, along the backside of that pond, are the existing mature trees that not only are located on the Walker Ford site, but there are also trees located on single-family home sites.
Can I ask a question, Mayor, real quick?
Please.
This photo is looking from the Walker Ford towards the --
To the west.
-- property in Kent Place. Is that kind of what you're trying to --
It's looking northwest. I have another one that looks directly west in the next slide, but this one is looking northwest. I'm looking -- so that would be looking up towards Allen's Creek. If you go to the next slide, please.
Mr. Mayor.
This one is looking --
I just have -- pause. I just want to make sure Commissioner Finger has -- because I saw the numbers pop up on the chat thing. Is she having difficulty, and can she hear?
Thank you. I can't see any of the presentation. I've been trying to contact in the -- in text or in the --
Chat, right.
I'm having difficulty --
Let me check with --
Going in and out.
I'm going to check with Preston and Brandon, so we'll just pause you guys for just a second.
Okay.
I checked with Brandon, and he said she could -- I'm sorry, Commissioner, I sent you an email. You could get it on the Facebook Live page or largo.com/live meeting. It's about 30 seconds behind, however, but you'd be able to see the presentations.
I'm not -- I'm not seeing anything, anytime, not even a delay. I don't see the commission. I don't see the presenter. I don't see what the presenter is presenting. I just have Largo, City of Largo emblem.
And is that on the -- on Zoom in particular?
Yes.
So what the city clerk mentioned was you could go to the Facebook page, to the City of Largo's Facebook page, and it is streaming live there with the images that we are seeing. And it's just delayed a little bit.
Okay.
So I don't know if you could do that on your phone or a different device.
Okay, I didn't hear that. Okay, I thought you were saying this one was delayed. Okay, got it.
So we'll give you a minute to get to that point.
Okay, but you can see -- I can't see you guys, but you can see me. Everything is fine?
Yes. Yeah, so we've got your -- the Zoom feed from the meeting that you're in shown on our screen, which is what's being broadcast on Facebook Live as well as largo.com/liveTV, I think.
Okay.
But she can't see any of this.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Should I continue, Mayor?
Please.
Thank you. If the clerk could go back one slide, please, to the previous -- the first photograph. So just to confirm, Commissioner, this is standing on the Walker Ford property looking -- this is looking west. If we go back one slide, please? Yes, this slide that you're looking at now is looking northwest, standing on the Walker Ford property at the edge of the -- the east edge of the pond and looking northwest. You can see, as I said, the extensive mature trees along that back property line. Now, if we could go to the next slide, please? This one is looking due west, again, standing on the Walker Ford property, looking west, which is the direction of the residential homes. And again, you can see those mature trees, and they clearly form a natural buffer that prevents any visibility issues and any noise issues from the residential area. So that exists today, and those trees and that buffer will remain on the site for a width of 54 feet on the site itself. Clearly, it's virtually impossible to see any portion of the homes behind those trees, so the same thing would fall true from standing on the residential looking towards the Walker Ford site. Again, the preservation area, the 54 feet in width along that west property line, along with the rest of the preservation area, cannot be developed with buildings or any improvements. I'd like to turn for just a minute to talk about some of the correspondence that we have reviewed from our opponents and some of the presentation that was made at the local planning agency. There have been statements made by our opponents that this amendment represents a reduction in the buffer between the Walker Ford site and the residence to the west or a reduction in the preserve on the property. There's no preserve or park on the Ford site. It is and always has been since its initial construction in 1988 as a commercial business to the full extent that you see today, all the way to the west property line. Today, the dealership and the residence are separated only by a 40-foot right away, and in the after situation, if the plan amendment is approved, they will still be separated by that 40-foot right away plus the 54 feet of preservation area, so total width to the closest house of 94 feet and substantially hundreds and hundreds feet further to the other homes. Our opponents also state that this application represents commercial creep. Well, this also couldn't be further from the truth. Commercial creep is when the commercial area, maybe the eastern half of the property was commercial, and the balance of it was never part of the commercial business. The western portion that we're talking about has always been part of the commercial business. So even though it wasn't occupied by buildings, it is -- the Walker Ford dealership has always owned this entire site. Therefore, there's no expansion of commercial into a residential area. Additionally, the Walker Ford site is located on U.S. 19, recognized by everybody as a major commercial corridor. The small additional area of ROR plan category that is requested is consistent with that pattern along this major road, as the staff demonstrated to you on their exhibit, and we also showed you on one of our slides. Commercial plan categories and commercial businesses are located on both sides of 19, including the Walker Ford site, which is consistent with that pattern. Our opponents have also suggested that a better option for Walker Ford would be to build a parking garage for the needed parking area. As you all probably well know from doing any construction within the city, a parking garage is a very expensive option to build and would impose a substantial financial burden on the dealership. With all due respect, it's a little out of bounds for an adjacent property owner to dictate to Walker Ford how they should develop their property and how they should park and store their inventory. Walker Ford would certainly not impose their preferences on residential owners, and we respectfully ask them not to do that to Walker Ford. Our opponents also reference policies from the Pinellas County plan to support their point of view. Obviously, the Pinellas County plan is not applicable to this site. It's in the City of Largo, and it's your plan that would govern any of the development. Your staff and our analysis tonight have demonstrated that this plan -- this application is consistent with your comp plan, and the most relevant policy is Objective 1.1, which we've talked about earlier, that requires consistency between those uses to accommodate the transportation network and expanded growth, new growth in the city, as well as protect stable neighborhoods. I think we've established the compatibility issue through the discussion we've had. The requested plan amendment is -- excuse me, I had one other item. Our opponents have also drawn your attention to a case that is south of this property, also in Pinellas County, not in the City of Largo, not decided by you all, as though that is definitive and related to this case, and that is not the fact at all. That particular case is much smaller. It was taking existing residential use to ROR as opposed to this case, which is an existing business, expanding its existing business. It's a very narrow site, and it has absolutely no wetlands along the western edge to provide that buffer that we have on this particular site. I believe we've demonstrated tonight that the plan amendment is consistent with the city plan policies. It's consistent with the development pattern along U.S. 19, a major commercial corridor, and it's compatible with its neighbors to the west as we have described. Our opponents are asking you to place their opinions and their property rights above all other property owners and disregard the property owners of Walker Ford. With all due respect, Walker Ford is asking you to allow them a reasonable use of their land. They have provided a significant buffer in separation between their site and the residential home to the west that will protect the neighbors and that will allow both Walker Ford and the residential area to continue to exist and to prosper. We respectfully request your approval of this plan amendment. Thank you, and I'd be very happy to answer any questions with regard to the planning issues, and if not, I would turn it back over to Ms. Cole.
Thank you. I'm going to check with the city clerk to see where we are time-wise, because I looked up at the clock, and it wasn't moving other than a minute at a time forward, so.
They've got 2 minutes and 11 seconds left.
Thank you. We're going to
Thank you.
Add a minute or two because there was some technical issues, but if --
We won't even take it, but thank you for the offer. You know, I first want to say that we do have our full team here that prepared the application. Mr. Frank Walker is here if you wanted to have questions about the operations. Mr. Street Lee, who's the engineer, who's been working with SWIFTMUD, and your engineering staff from a site plan standpoint, which is not before you tonight, but to let you know that they have been here looking at that. You know, there's been many scare tactics and threats levied in the correspondence you've received, and which I'm sure you will hear tonight as the opponents stand up. I want to be very clear. Walker Ford appreciates that Allen's Creek is valuable to the community and deserves a buffer, and that buffer is not being impacted. That's why there is no proposed impact to the wetlands. Plus, there are additional areas for stormwater conveyances along the southern portion, providing an additional buffer and reflecting consistency with your comprehensive plan. We respectfully request your approval of the only land use category which supports the existing use on the property and the applicant's intended future use. It also reflects the consistency with other properties to the north and south by reflecting the actual undulations and natural boundaries of the preservation land along Allen's Creek. We're happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much for the additional time, Mayor.
Thank you. Next card.
Woody, I have a question.
Commissioner, hold on.
This is for staff. Rick, there's a paragraph here that, when I was reading this thing, it's -- it says "The approved site plan does not clearly define or delineate the natural area or whether it includes the entire 6.97 acre portion of the site designated as preservation," the P, "or just the jurisdictional wetland located on site. As previous -- as noted previously, staff have reviewed the evidence presented by ESA report and whether there was a mistake in the original land use designation or whether a significant change of conditions within the vicinity. The 2.87 acre subject area appears not to meet the definition of preserve." Well, so what you've done, you've gone through one report that previously said it was a preserve, and now you're saying that that report was in error? Therefore, the request to change it from P to ROR will maintain consistency of future land use, blah, blah. Can you clarify that?
Yes, good question. So the -- in general, the point that the staff report is making is that prior to the applicant's environmental assessment of the property, the jurisdictional wetland boundaries have never been delineated. We could not find anywhere that shows a wetland, jurisdictional wetland line in the subject area that they're proposing to change.
Well, we annexed that. Wasn't that part of it?
It was designated a future land use designation that was preservation, but --
Who made the designation? I mean, it was before our time, but who did it? What did they base it on?
It would have been designated in the county.
Okay.
So --
Well, we annexed that, wasn't that part of it?
It was, it was designated a future land use designation that was preservation, but-
Who made the designation? I mean, it was before our time, but who did it? What did they base it on?
It would have been designated in the county.
Okay.
So, at the time that the land use designation was applied, there would have been some kind of assumption or assessment, but there is no evidence of a detailed jurisdictional wetland line being delineated.
So, this was a mistake, then, by the county, done back, our staff says this is a mistake that was made by the county?
So, one of the factors we consider in a proposed land use change, and called out in Chapter 4 of the CDC, is if conditions have changed, or if there was an error made. The staff report is suggestive that it could be one or the other, but clearly, until we've had, until recently, we did not have an expert assessment by a qualified environmental firm to show exactly where those wetland, jurisdictional wetland lines are. I do know that, and there is a process in the, in the county to make minor adjustments to boundaries, and one of the considerations is where is the actual wetland jurisdictional boundary line? And they will adjust land use designations according to that. Now, this doesn't qualify for that, because it's such a large area, and the change will result in additional entitlements, of course, to, to the property owner. So, we're going through a complete future land use amendment process.
Okay. Have we contacted the county on this yet? Did we get any feedback from them? Because we're saying their report was wrong. Have they had, come back to us with any information?
We have contacted the county. We got a copy of their original site plan from 1988. It does not delineate the jurisdictional wetlands on that plan. It just shows a general area that, at that time, I believe, was designated conservation in 88.
Oh, last question. What's the current buffer? How many feet?
I'm sorry?
What's the current buffer? They're saying there's a 90-foot buffer, what's the current one?
From the eastern end of the current preservation to, I guess, the house is what we've been talking about.
I believe in the report, it's, there's some estimate of where the preservation is now today. It's something about 300 feet. The applicant may know better, but when the change occurs, there will be approximately a 55-foot swath of preservation that will remain on that western boundary.
By the, by the way, I understand, you know, promoting trees as a sound barrier. Trees don't stop anything, trust me on it. There are times, I can hear the traffic on US-19 at my house, and I live a mile from it, so, just saying.
All right, we're going to move on to more public comment, if we have another, another card.
I was, sorry, Mayor, I was just going to answer Commissioner Holmes' question. The current buffer to existing development is the same 56 feet, give or take, that's being proposed. It's just that currently, the storm, a portion of the existing development is colored green on the map, and the applicant's proposing for it to be properly covered purple. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our first speaker is Mike Matrosa, and after him will be John Larkin.
Thank you for letting me speak. It's Mike Matringa. I reside at Kent Place, and, you know, it's really exciting to be part of local government in action. I've had dealings with Walker Ford, I've bought some vehicles from them, and all the transactions were handled as agreed. I would consider buying another vehicle from them. In fact, I wish them all the luck in the world and all their endeavors, with the exception of this one. The land was purchased a long time ago and designated preserve. Walker Ford was entrusted with fiduciary responsibility to act as a good steward to the fragile estuarian ecosystem. In stark contrast, they want to put up a parking lot. There's also, in my view, I believe there is a conflict of interest where Walker Ford donated to Eric Gerard, who was deciding vote in favor of the land use change. I have this, that is a matter of public record. I'll leave it here where donations were made. I believe he personally, he should have recused himself from the proceedings. In my views, I will cast my vote against anyone that votes in favor of this, this land use change. I feel it's arbitrary, I think it's capricious. It's definitely against the intended use that's been in place for quite a long time. And in that, I would just try to prevent this panel from doing any future harm. Once you start this kind of a slippery slope, you really can't stop it, and I know about that, too. In fact, as a frequent resident of Allen's Creek, and kayaking and fishing up and down, I've noticed quite a bit of, you know, wading birds, otters, ospreys, quite a few different species of wildlife inhabit that area, and what they innocuously call a stormwater runoff pond may indeed be to indigenous wildlife, a oasis. We haven't really discussed how that's going to be replaced, or how the parking lot runoff is going to be taken care of. I'm sure there's a lot to be discussed. In fact, what I'd hate to see is a, a culvert with a straight water effluent just pounding straight into Allen's Creek, you know, unabated. That's what the pond is for, you know? And basically, in the, in the words of late, great Dr. Seuss, "I am the Lorax. I speak for the trees. Trees have no mouths and can't speak for themselves." Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Next speaker is John Larkin, and after him will be William Elmhurst.
Thank you, John Larkin, resident of Kent Place as well. I'm going to take the first few seconds of my, of my time to read a letter by Cheryl Wunderly, who could not be here. City Commissioners, in 2019, I was concerned when the city commission was considering a single-use straw ban on city property. However, the city council voted to ban the single-use plastics, thus making the second Florida west coast city to ban plastics on city property. The city could have chosen to educate rather than legislate, but they enacted the ban in attempt to protect the environment. Sorry. The action taken then is in sharp contrast to changing the land use along the bank of Allen's Creek from preservation to retail office residential. If approved, this smacks in the face of any previous attempts at protecting the environment. This would not only be a blow to the ecology with the loss of vegetation, which helps reduce CO2, but would also increase pollution in Allen's Creek. The city must make a stand against unbridled development, blacktop, and buildings, and preserve our environment for us and future generations. Sincerely, Cheryl Wunderly. Let me tell you, so whatever the, the feet distance it is, I am inside Kent Place on the other side of Central. So, we're talking, it's got to be 5, 6, 700 feet. If I hear Bob, you have a call on line three one more time, I think I'm going to hurl. This is a one-way street, so we better be sure about this decision, because you can't go back. There's no going back. It reminds me a little bit of bullying. In other words, operation with, operating with no regard to surrounding life, including our small wildlife friends. Someone made the comment that it's simply green on a map? It is simply green on a map. Let's leave it that way. Why can't they find an already zoned spot to park their inventory, such as Lexus of Clearwater did? They do it fine, they pulled it off geniusly. I'm sure you guys can handle it. Lastly, I'll close. Back on the wall back there, you have a very nicely framed certificate. It says, "Certified Florida Green Local Government." Let's act like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is William Elmhurst, and after him will be Jay Sloan.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak here. My name is William Elmhurst. I've been a resident with my wife and family for, of Largo for over 55 years, Kent Place for over 41 years. We've raised our family there. We love the community. We love Largo. The item spoken to already has to do that, about, in particular, about natural wildlife, green space areas that are very, very protected, and very protected for a reason. There's a, our neighborhood is one way into the neighborhood and the same way out, which makes it very good for jogging, walking, families coming through there, and we want to keep it that way, a very natural setting there. We're not exclusive, we don't say, okay, if you don't belong here, if you don't live here, you don't belong here. We love to see people with strollers and joggers, bicycle families coming through there. They like it because it's very low traffic and it's natural. There's another thing, is that Walker Ford's got, they've got an eagle, and they like their eagle, okay? Well, about eight years ago, we had a family of owls. Where were they? They were right on our property. They liked trees, they liked oaks, they liked pine trees. They raised their, their young ones there. And it's right there, here's a picture here with, I don't know how we can show this, probably can't show it too well, but there's, there's two baby, baby owls here, and their, their whole family that was raised right on our property. They're, they're, they're gray horned owls, they were, they have a wig span of about four and a half feet, and as the juveniles got bigger, they were able to fly off, but we really loved that. It's also called a hood owl. You could go through their neighborhood in the evening, and you can hear the, the hood owls there. We want to keep our neighborhood that way, not just for us, but for Largo, and for the people that come and use our neighborhood. We're happy to see that. And they need these types of environments of big trees and low pollution from light and noise elsewhere to, in order to maintain that in our neighborhood, but also to, to leave it for all of Largo. We're happy that people use our neighborhood and enjoy it, and we'd like to keep it that way. And thank you very much for opportunities to present our opposition in regard to this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jay Sloan, and he is representing Betty Sloan for a total of four minutes, and after him will be Richard Gerring.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. I'm Jay Sloan, I live at 2488 Lancaster Drive. I live in the house right beside the parking lot that's being proposed to you, and I can see through those trees to Walker Ford. A representative says that, yeah, and true, the picture that, when she was 350 feet away, yeah, you can't see them, but whenever you're only 25, 30 feet away from the line, you can. And what happened is, I bought my house about five years ago from the original owners and builders of that house, and they wanted privacy, and so they built the house on the furthest northern border and eastern border that they possibly could, because they were told nobody can build to the north, because that's where Allen Creek is, and nobody can build to the east, because that's where there's a preserve, and no one, and it was zoned for no building. So, they put the house as far on that border, matter of fact, just my driveway runs right along that, that ditch line that, that comes to my house. And then whenever we were considering buying the house, that was appealing to us. We, my wife and I both appreciate privacy, and, and this house afforded that privacy because we, we were right next to two nature-preserved areas that weren't going to be developed, and then because of the location of the house, we were as far possible from our neighbors to the south and our neighbors to the west. If this goes through, it, it changes a lot. We hear the PA speakers all the time, too, and, and if you put, allow the zoning to change, and one of the representatives says that they're not changing anything, well, they wouldn't be here if they're not trying to change something. But if you change that zoning, then it puts a, it puts a parking lot right beside of the, of my house, knowing that, yes, it's maybe 50 feet plus the, the ditch that goes between it, which radically changes our style of living. It radically changes why, the reason why we bought the house. And so, my thought is, you know, Walker Ford bought the property years ago with that, with that designation, and, and I bought my house with that designation as well. In fact, our property goes two acres into Allen's Creek, which is Mangrove, that we, we don't touch, we're not going to touch that. But, but we bought the property with the understanding that there are restrictions on the property. And now, and Walker Ford bought the property, understanding there was a preserve restriction on the property. And all I'm asking is, let's, since, since the neighborhood has built itself around that property with those zoning regulations, then let's leave it there instead of changing. I don't wish any ill will against Walker Ford. I hope their business does well. I like Ford products. I have a business also, where I employ 15 to 20 people in Pinellas County. I want my business to do well, I want his business to do well, but there's got to be other options in this. This cannot be the only option that we have, is to bring the parking lot 50, 60, 70 feet to, to the edge, and like Commissioner Holmes said, a couple of trees do not stop noise. It allows the noise, you can hear the noise, you can hear the activities, you can hear the PA, you can hear US-19 from there. And so, I, I hope that, that you consider carefully your decision, because as was stated before, it's, it's a one-time decision. Once it's designated, once you change the zoning, then, then that's it. And, and again, our, our quality, our, our houses is, is right on that edge of that property. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Roberta Hoskin, and she's representing Joy Cristiano, Marilyn Greer, Heather Crop, and Mr. Hart, for a total of seven minutes, and then after her will be Richard Gerring.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, city staff, and my neighbors here, and in the seven surrounding neighborhoods that are watching on television or on the web, or any way they can. The reason we're here is because Walker Ford wants to expand into the preserve, and I have a document, I referred to the preserve as the, as the magic preserve, because is it a preserve? Isn't it a preserve? So, your staff did a little more looking, and they came up with a, with what was actually on the documents that were part of the site survey. I think it was 3399 or 9933. But I have documents from there that read, there's a natural area note. It says, "In general," and this is on the site plan, and it's on the page that shows the pond. It says, "In general, no filling, excavation, tree removal, construction, clearing, or machinery will be permitted within the natural area which has been so designated due to its significant ecological value. All permit requests within this area will be reviewed based on impact on the natural system, as well in consistency with current Pinellas County ordinances, regulations, and policies." So, I'll hand this over to you. It's hard to see on this, I blew it up, I took a picture with my iPhone, and I blew it up, but the county said this was a natural area, and it's been called a preserve for at least 30 years. In fact, I have residents, probably 10 residents, who have recently, within the last 10 years, built homes, knowing that there was a preserve there. The county called it a preserve. If you look on the tax rolls, I do believe it is referred to as having a preserve area, and that's that area. I'd like to talk about the other neighbors that are concerned about this. As I said, there were seven neighborhoods. Kent Place, both Eldioros, east and west, Southern Oak Circle, Sharon Oaks, Sharon Oaks Estates, Donovan's Travel Resort, and then I just met two homeowners on Doncaster who said, "Roberta, our view looks right at where they want to make this change." So, there are probably- So there are probably a couple hundred houses and probably over a thousand people that are opposed to this, to this change. We think that if Walker has a long-term commitment to the area, that maybe it would make more sense to build up rather than out. It would probably require less building permitting. It would be less expensive. It would not intrude further into the residential neighborhoods and it would do no further harm to the environment. So go up, not out. We, you know, we're pro-business. But why have, and this is commercial creep. The gentleman that's going to follow me is Richard Garing. He's a former mayor of Dunedin. He has 40 years, I hope I didn't exaggerate, Richard, of public service and knowledge on government regulations. He wrote the rules that are part of Pinellas County's code that helps prevent commercial creep. Commercial creep is an intrusion by a commercial entity into a residential neighborhood. And that's what this is. This is commercial creep. This amendment as written is not consistent with Largo and Pinellas County's stated goals of protecting neighborhoods and the environment. Largo staff's claim that is consistent to put a 318 car parking lot next to somebody's home, a home with the lowest residential density. And here's something else I'd like to point out. Your staff shows this arbitrary line where it says high density, high density and low density. Kent Place is not just low density. It is the lowest density and that's by design. Our residents have a symbiotic relationship with the creek. We protect the creek and the creek protects us. The creek protects us from noise pollution, from pollution, from light and from heat. If you put this parking lot in, there's going to be a heat island. A heat island can raise the temperature 20 to 40 degrees. So imagine three acres of hot asphalt getting 20 to 40 degrees hotter. So we hope that the commission will have the backs of these seven neighborhoods and that you will protect us from commercial creep. And we are asking that you oppose and deny this amendment as written.
Woody, you had a document from the county there?
Yes.
What's the, what's the date?
This date is from 1988 and incidentally, our neighborhood started in 1967. We have standing, we were there 19 years before Walker Ford bought their property. Our first home was built in 1967 on Lancaster Road, which is two doors down from Walker Ford.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Richard Garing and he is representing Tom Spalisi, Bert Schroeder, Jason Lesser, Randy Mears, Robin, I'm very sorry, Margaret Checkland and Matt Orks. And then following him will be Joe Sabella. And he gets a total of 10 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I respectfully request that the 10 minutes, while it's allocated from additional people, I would like the same amount of time that the expert planning relationship to the applicant was made. It's going to take about 12 to 15 minutes. I've pre-given you a section of my slide presentation. The staff introduced eight to 10 really different items in what they sent to you in your staffing document for this action tonight that wasn't in the planning commission's discussion. And therefore I am basically, you know, trying to backfill that. And I'm trying to overturn a considerable policy structure that takes some time. So I, I don't want open-ended latitude. I would just like to be able to do this in 15 minutes. Hopefully if I can make it faster, I will.
Okay. Does the commission have any problem with Mr. Garing having 15 minutes?
No.
Okay. Fair enough. If.
Excuse me, just for, for the record, I did want to note that I recognize, while this is not quasi judicial, I did want for the record to note the applicant and property owner's objection to extended time for individual objectors over your procedures.
But it's pretty, yeah, it's, it's pretty clear in our procedures that the commission can decide to give more time.
Yes. And in the, on the expertise side, a number of you may have seen me or know me. I've lived in this county since high school and I've served various governments and I've been a planning expert to almost all the surrounding counties and many of the cities. And I retired from the role as about a seven department director for all planning and development activity in Pasco County. And then Dunedin, I've been the planning director, the city manager and the mayor. So I'm, I've got a background in this and while Roberta just mentioned commercial creep, this is an issue that across the county, there's a lot of effort to move and expand commercial properties. And I have been arguing these cases for the last couple of years in front of the county commission. And that's a reference to the commercial creep issue. The preservation of the area is really the key question. And I will try to move as fast as possible through the slide sequence. And my first slide is these nine issues that, you know, tell them what you're going to tell them. I'm not going to go through all these in detail, but quality of life, the retention of the current buffer, which 300 feet is the football field. Everybody, you know, looks, what, how big is that? That's a football field. That's a significant buffer and it physically is there. Now, it may be in their ownership, but it is the retention pond and I'll outline the importance of that in a minute. There is a lot of noxious uses allowed in ROR. We're very concerned about that, both on the site today and in the future if it is redeveloped. The buffer provides drainage storage. That's a functional use. The lowest density is next door here. And, and so if you, this neighborhood, per your policy issues deserves an additional amount of protection. Protection of neighborhoods and quality of life is one of the key issues that's in your plan and in the county's plan. And while I raise issues in the county's plan, it's because there's unincorporated residents and incorporated residents are going to be affected by this. And your, and your action on this, if you forward it and not modify it, is going to go to the PPC, which is the countywide body, and it's going to go to the Board of County Commissioners as the overall planning authority. And they do worry about all those residents. So I want to emphasize that issue. Protection of neighborhoods is a key. Commercial creep is a reality. And this site is already over the commercial line by about 80 to 100 feet compared to all the commercial that's south of it on the west side. And we strongly discourage, the county strongly discourages the loss of anything that creates open space. Now, we can argue about the detail of the preservation category. The reality is out there is an open space that's 300 feet deep that does protect this neighborhood from the proximity to the use. And the staff has created this bizarre framework of density, high density and low density. This is all about commercial intensity next to residential conditions, which is the lowest that there is. Looking at this neighborhood edge, you can see the scale of the 200 acres that make up the neighborhood. You can see the commercial corridor that exists on the 19 corridor, which is almost an arterial of interstate magnitude. There's a number of residential characteristics go from very low density to very high, medium density residential designations. The key question is getting Allen's Creek, all the residential uses and Walker as a commercial use to be successful, but not deteriorate the life and quality of life for either party. So this 350-foot buffer, which is physically there today, we would like to see maintained. And it has standing in the earlier approval by the county in their approval of Walker's site plan some 30, some years ago. Here is their site. The Sharon Oaks property is to the north. The Kent is to the south. The 50-foot buffer, that little narrow strip there that wants to be utilized as, oh, there's your buffer. That's adequate. We find that totally inadequate. The 350 provides the distance that's at least beneficial to the neighborhood. If a picture's a thousand words, that parking lot is a thousand cars. So you're going to introduce another 318. And we think that by an elevated structure for parking is expensive if it's two, four, six, eight stories. If it's one level ramping up, it is very affordable. So they have multiple areas that could take this additional storage that they think is so critical and put another 318 vehicles on the site. But they will also not produce any additional impervious surface by doing this alternative. Their alternative creates more drainage problems to Allen's Creek. So preservation of that area is critical. Why don't you propose this to Walker? Why don't you act in deferring this action and saying, let's look for an alternative that helps the neighborhood and helps the area? So if you live here in that house, which everybody says, oh, it's just one single family house, but it's in this 200-acre large lot configuration. If you live there and you had use intensity, light, noise, heat and odor coming from the commercial use, not just the one that's there, but the one that could occur in any ROR application with a 50-foot buffer, that's what we're declaring to be inadequate. That's the width of a standard single-family neighborhood right away. You know how much you can hear your neighbor on one porch to, over across the street. Yes, it has some trees on it, but as the commissioner said, trees do not reduce noise. That's a loss of seven times that amount of where the buffer is today. And you can see on the east, west, eastern side of it, that Walker actually encroaches into the current buffer. They just park because there's a flat area there. So here's a comparable amount of parking space. Here's where it would come to, to come to that 54-foot, 55-foot line. That's what we find unacceptable in this circumstance. All comp planning is about policy. Everybody says it's a policy issue, but what is policy? Policy is something you pay for. Who pays here? Who pays? Who benefits? In this condition, the community, the loss of privacy, visual impact, noise, heat, odor, major light dome, property value impact and quality of life is significant payments they have to make to allow and encourage this encroachment to happen. Walker Ford has had 32 years of the use of this as a retention area. They've got 2.87 acres of land they want to expand onto. And they get all of these additional runoff, additional square footage, additional parking, additional ROR, FAR. All of these accrue to their benefit. Where's the trade-offs that are in your policy structure? When you go to the county comp plan, these policies about buffering neighborhoods are clear. Yes, this is not applicable in Largo, but you're part of the countywide comp plan. And when you go to the PPC, you're asking them to review this. Land use planning should weigh heavily the established character of predominantly developed areas. This is a neighborhood. It deserves protection. The limited amount of available open space is critical. While this is part of their ownership, it is a piece of functional open space with a wetland system on it for cleaning up drainage water, drainage water, and it provides a buffer. So Pinellas County, if you've ever read their plan, has a planning to stay theme to it, which is all about, we're built out, how do we preserve neighborhoods and quality of life? And that's our key issue. We would hang our hat on those policies alone, but your comp plan, and this is where I can't see how Rick's staff can reach this, oh, it's compatible. And I totally disagree with this, with their staff expert on, or their planning expert on, oh, it's got compatibility because, and then they pick minutias. But your policy that says that there should be a healthy balance in land uses, where is that quality of life balance? In your policy 1.1, which designates the classifications for preserving the characteristics throughout the area, the characteristics of this neighborhood needs that protection. You have tables that talk about buffers. They pick 50 feet because it shows up in a table, but that assumes that property A is residential and property B is already ROR. And this property is not ROR. You have latitude. We don't particularly, you could come up with a whole new category as long as you create a preservation condition. In the last policy, which is to protect stable residential neighborhoods from possible negative impacts, I would challenge Rick and his staff to say, where are you showing the preservation and protection of these neighborhoods? We don't see it. So staff has written something, and I've managed hundreds of staff people writing staff reports to various elected bodies. And I've never seen something that's so applicant-focused. Walker Ford has a fait accompli. It's a done deal. This should not be a done deal and that's what I'm challenging here today. Tone of the presentation is, well, if it's not preservation, then it has to be ROR. That's not the case. This is a legislative action, like your attorney told you. You have just total discretion in what you want to put on this land as long as it's consistent with the uses of the, and the site could retain and just be a drainage facility. This is, staff actually presents as a fact that the ROR is a natural flow onto the site. We find that terribly objectional. P to ROR, maintain consistency to the future land use map. This is in their staffing. And result is minimal impact to the surrounding uses. My response to that, highly professional, is baloney. We don't see it. Where is this compatibility that they're referring to? The negative impacts upon surrounding land uses must be properly mitigated through larger buffers, noise protection, odor protection. This is in your written code and we can't find the effort where staff has implemented that. And yet they say, oh, we have planned consistency. It's compatible. Don't worry about it. The environmental area that was just outlined, I won't dwell on this because Robert covered it fine, that there is this category, and I want to use the time not to outline that, that she's already read to you. But staff recognizes this area and then blows it off because ESA said it's not an issue. But if you go back to this site plan, you'll find that note. And you'll find in that, in that adopting document, the site area is 792,000 square feet. The building area is 60,000 square feet. The outdoors display area is 6,000. And then it has open space. That's a designated site plan action that the county took in setting up this area. And that open space is 315,000 square feet. That's the six to seven acres that make up the P designation on the east side of the site. So yes, there's an affordable adopted document by the county that you received when you annexed it that said that that area is open space. The parking area is 410,000 square feet, 400 square feet per parking space. That's a thousand cars that were approved to go on the site and there are more than a thousand cars on the site. I'm not going to dwell on what happens with ROR. Staff outlines it, but they don't recognize any particular mitigating measures. I find that offensive. The neighborhood finds it offensive. This is an intensive use and it is not necessarily compatible with large lot area. The actual P buffer, it may have been put there by some action to the county. Because it has no jurisdiction, in my professional judgment, at some point in time, it was wet. And it got a swift mud permit and they filled it and bermed it. And guess what? Today it's not wet. And therefore it's not jurisdictional, but it doesn't mean it can't continue to be a buffer. Allen's Creek is an important resource. I don't have to dredge on that or expand on that. Residential estate is this unique category. It's the lowest density, I think, in all of Pinellas County. Where you have this four acre, five acre, three acre sites. And you can see the quality of the housing and you can see the big pylon sticking up where the site is in that one photograph. But the residential components are a key to these impacts. Noise, I don't want to dwell on anything, but that diagram, noise is affected by distance, distance and barriers. You take away that distance, the planner did not address the issue of noise. It's like, oh, there's some trees there. Don't worry about it. Heat, she already outlined this. Heat domes occur. I stopped a project like this in North County because they wanted to go into a residential neighborhood and create those temperatures. And we're next to townhouses and single-family residences. Heat impacts on the surrounding area, you need a buffer to dissipate the heat for the thousand cars that are already there. The microclimate will impact the neighbors, no matter what their density is. I don't know whether you've ever lived in a nice dark neighborhood and you benefit from what's called the circadian rhythm, but when the sun goes down, you know it's dark. In this condition where you light that parking lot to protect those capital improvements and those cars and vehicles that are in that parking lot, you're going to be able to go out all over the neighborhood site, not just the one house, and read the newspaper. Unless there's amazing control. And when you put multiple lights out, you get a light dome and you get glare and you get light trespass and you get an entirely different environment than the character of Kent Place. So the offsets need to be there. How do you protect the pond? Can you improve the pond? Can you improve the water quality? Can you come up with a way that the 350 feet are retained and do not reduce the buffer width? Commercial creep, and I don't want to dwell on it, other than there's 44 miles of US 19 and all those commercial properties would love to go back 10 feet, 20 feet, 50 feet, 100 feet. And to the south of this property, even though Katie blew it off like, oh, it was a wholly different situation. It was about a C2 zone that already had zoning and a county land use plan designation that was for residential. And the county commission, looking at all the same neighborhoods we're talking about within, this is within 300 to 400 feet of Walker, turned down, Walker is the heart, turned down this application and made it be retained as residential. It was denied by the Board of County Commissioners unanimously. This particular site, which Katie was originally, the council too, and she was, you know, she. This particular site, which Katie was originally, the council too, and she was, you know, she was conflicted out of the issue, that's a Honda dealership. It didn't have any room to expand for the same kind of storage issues. It wanted to jump on the other side of 19 and put a 200-and-some-car lot, as shown in this graphic. This was denied by the Board of County Commissioners 6 to 1. So this commercial creep issue is a tangible component. You don't find it adopted in the plan, whereas your commercial creep regulations. But the policy issue of not allowing constant biting and gnawing away, so what we're really worried about is you're going to create a precedent for something that is already 700 and some feet deep, and you're going to make it 1,000 feet deep. And up and down 19, people are going to be saying, in this immediate area and in other areas, oh, there's the precedent. Walker Ford got to go back, blah, 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 and take out the retention and put it in full use. That's the problem.
Sounds like you're at 15 minutes, so if you want to wrap it up.
Okay, two minutes. I'm in my recommendation to vote no, okay? You've got a whole section of your plan adoption procedures. I don't think they were followed. The county, the city attorney, assistant city attorney, when the board was, if you read their minutes, the board is totally frustrated. They don't know what to do. They're saying, what's our option? How much discretion can we use? And she says, well, go to this section, knows what your powers are. And Rick said, well, you guys make the call. So they had no guidance. This issue was not put in their hands. They could have actually, in their policies, they could have deferred the decision. They could have put it off for a month and asked for more study. They could have done anything, but they didn't. And then we ended up with something that hasn't been presented by the applicant, a 4-3 vote. And I don't want to emphasize that the 4-3 vote is an issue, but on the bottom of this list, there was a candidate who did not represent a conflict, and I don't know what legal ramification that may have, but he didn't even mention the fact that he, you know, he had an issue, and he proceeded to vote.
Thank you, sir.
So with that, vote no, do the right thing, find an alternative. That's our position. And we'd like to see an outstanding opportunity for both Walker to expand by going vertical and the neighborhood to have, continue to have a high quality of life and protect Allen's Creek. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Joe Sabella, and after him will be Mike Pittman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, county commissioners. My name is Joe Sabella. I live at 2470 Lancaster Drive, just west of Jay's house, two houses over from Walker Ford. You've heard it all here tonight. I'm not going to go through the noise. The commissioner over here said, the trees, they don't help. We hear it day in, day out, and you can really hear US-19 when the motorcycles are going down screeching at 3 o'clock in the morning. So the noise is there, I promise you. I'd like to take a step back for just a moment and not think about the rules and the regulations that are currently in place, but think about the people in the community. Without the people, there would be no community. There would be no sports teams. There would be no businesses, and quite frankly, we wouldn't be here tonight. People decide to be in a community for many reasons, whether it be the commute to work or the good schools that are in the area, or the proximity to the surrounding amenities, or even some of the types of homes in that particular community. Whatever the appeal is, the people decide to live there. We, the people of Kent Place, decided to live here for many of those reasons. We were drawn to this area because of the uniqueness. It is very unique. My wife and I bought the original home, the one that we were talking about, was built in 1967 from Ralph Allen. Coincidence that his name was Allen. We made a commitment to each other. We said, look, we like the Florida lifestyle. My home is 2,100 square feet. It's got a 1,900-square-foot patio on the back, single-level, L-shaped, Florida cracker house. It's what it is. I'm a builder. I could have gone in there and leveled that in a minute, but my wife and I made a commitment to ourselves, and we said, this was the number-one house built in Kent Place. Why destroy it? And we kept that house and still live in it today in its original shape. We have a creek that is serene and enjoyed by many canoeers and kayakers. We have grand oaks on the property that I cannot put my arms around. You talk about the trees. I walked over on Jay's property across the creek, and the trees will have to come down in this buffer. We have the peacefulness of communities that's really dwindling here in the state of Florida. We, or I, am not asking for anything more than what we worked so hard to find over the years. We just want the community that we moved into. That's all we want. We're not asking for anything else. We want the peacefulness, the wildlife, the trees, the peace of mind that big businesses will not take away from us. So I urge you to vote against the proposal and let the people keep our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Pittman.
Good evening, commissioners. Mike Pittman, 1821 Acorn Hammock Lane. And I live next to Jay, so I'm probably the second most affected. And I just recently completed construction of my dream home because of all the preservation, landscaping, the eagle that flies into our backyard. You know, it's quite a scene, so I'm not going to go on and on, but we do hear the noise. We do see the current lights, and that's over 300 feet away. So all I ask is you think about our lives and try to protect the preserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the cards.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission for staff?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
The item that Roberta was talking, excuse me, the item that Roberta had from the county, which I believe is this right here in the packets, was this part of the initial site plan for Walker Ford?
Yes, that is the original site plan that I had mentioned previously. It's in the staff report. I will point out that the note is a general note acknowledging the natural areas on the site at that time. It also acknowledges on the site plan the stormwater pond that was designed, engineered, and constructed with a permit from SWF mud. So the note does not specifically designate the stormwater pond as a natural area.
I think you're mincing words with me. I mean, this thing, I mean, it looks like a duck, and it walks like a duck, and it talks like a duck, and you're telling me it's not a duck. If this was part of the site plan, I mean, this is what I've tried, when I read that paragraph to you before, I said that, you know, the staff right now, today, is saying that the county made a mistake back when, and then this surfaces, that this was filed as part of the original site plan with the county. So we're kind of mincing words on this thing, you know. There's another thing I'd like to find out. This little, they call it just a retention pond. Is there fish in there?
I do not know. There was the environmental assessment that the applicant had provided, and it assessed wildlife in the area. Did not find any state or federally protected habitat in the subject area.
I didn't say protected. I said, are there fish in there?
Right. Correct. And I, I don't have the answer to that question.
I mean, the follow-up would be, are there any indigenous life forms that are habitants of this retention pond? And I would say that quite, the answer is yes, there are. Because the, I think what they're going to have to do, if you approve this plan, that pond gets drained, correct?
Well, we're not, we wouldn't, we're not considering a plan. We're considering a future land use map amendment.
Well, I understand that, but if we approve this thing, part of the, part of the scheme of developing this property, that thing's going to get drained.
That's the plan that's been presented, but we're not discussing the plan. We're discussing future land use. And my guess would be there's fish in there. It's fresh water in the state of Florida, unless it's toxic or whatever, but I would guess there's fish in there. Might be an alligator. I don't know. Commissioner Hulk.
Yes, Mr. Pres, what was the vote from the planning board? I know there's a couple of things were thrown out there, but.
The vote for the planning board public hearing for this case was a 4-3 vote to approve.
Okay. And the annexation of the property, so Mr. Walker purchased the property in 1986, correct? And it was annexed into Largo in 2001? So that was a voluntary annexation?
To my understanding, yes, it wasn't voluntary.
Okay. So when he purchased the property, though, he knew that that was zoned as preserve? What I'm getting at is, when I first got on the commission, we had a vote similar to the situation where a purchase was made knowing that the property was zoned a certain way. But they purchased it anyway and then came before us to change the configuration of the property. I'll just leave it at that. But, so when people purchase property knowing that this is a preserve, that's the way it was written up, what I'm wondering, too, is did, did they go to the county first to try and change the land use? Because obviously, they were zoned by the county first, and then if that didn't work, annex into Largo, and then try and, you know, I'm just trying to figure all this out, because I, I just feel like when we have certain things in, in place, there's a reason for it. I'm looking at the citizens. My, one of my first thoughts was, this man probably bought this house, not knowing he was going to be here today, bought this house going, this is great, you know, there's not all these people around me, I've got this nice privacy, and now if I bought that house, I would be, I feel the same way he does. So I'm just trying to get in my head what's fair to everybody, but when, when you purchase something, I just have it in my head, too, that Mr. Walker purchased this property, knew that this was a preserved piece of land, and, and now we're trying to change this to accommodate. Our city voted to, what are we agreeing, by 2035, 100% sustainability? And I look at the, you know, the pervious and non-pervious land use, and I remember thinking, when I first learned these terms, when I first got on the commission, and I know I'm probably rambling, but I'm just trying to justify in my mind, and perhaps to people who are sitting out there listening, things that they might be thinking, you know, these are simple things, but yet they're, they're not. So in Texas, when they had all those floodings, I remember reading an article about the fact that they had put so much cement everywhere, and that's why all those highways flooded, because there was nowhere for the water to go. So I know we've been building a lot in Largo, you know, we, we want the best for our citizens. So I just am trying to take all this in before I feel like I'm making an important decision here. So getting back to, does anybody know whether the county was ever approached for this land use change before this property was annexed into Largo?
When staff had reached out to the county, they did provide the original site plan. They did not, we did not come across any record of them proposing to change the land use in the county, but they were annexed into the city in 2001, so that was 19 years ago. So I, we're not aware of any proposed changes to the land use at this site previous.
I mean, we appreciate them being annexed into Largo. I don't have a problem with that. I just, you know, like I said, the land was purchased knowing there was a preserve there, and, and I just feel like regardless of whether it's, you know, I just feel like in all fairness, the man who purchased the house, the people who live in those neighborhoods, you know, I know people that live on Allen's Creek. I know how bad it floods just on a normal rain. If we're going to take that retention pond out, where is that water going to go? I know in the meeting, I watched the, the planning board meeting, and they talked about using asphalt that would absorb some of the water, so it wouldn't just be standing water or just roll-off water. But, but that's still a huge area to take, for water to go nowhere, except for rolling to the creek. So, thank you.
Thank you. I believe Commissioner Finger has a question.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments, but what, I guess I would challenge Commissioner Hulk and anybody else who voted to approve the recreation open space parcel that recently, that is behind the, where the old golf ice cream shop, mini golf ice cream shop used to be, and approving that to the development agreement to become storage unit, although not exactly zoned as preservation, it's still green space and recreation open space, and still moved in the direction of allowing a higher land use. So I, I mean, I guess that's interesting to me that you see it as being that different in, in this case versus another case that also had a lot of open space. So, thank you, just comment.
Thank you. Any other?
Can I answer back?
Yeah, Commissioner Hulk.
So Commissioner Finger, my feeling on that other property is you kept leaning towards like Moore Park or our children's daycare center, and all I could ever see there on that property were those, those electrical lightning rods that, I was actually at breakfast at the place next door to that, as a lightning bolt came down and hit that. So I just felt like, you know, this is something that, you know, that area is something that can be utilized for something, but not for entertaining children in, in an area where there is that kind of electric. So that is just my answer to why I voted the way that I did based on that situation.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you. So I've got a couple of questions regarding, I've got about four pages of notes there, so let me try to put this all together. So as when, when we start looking at this, first, the first thing I look at, and this has been a focus of mine for, you know, the last eight years that I've been on this board, is sustainability. Our, you know, strategic plan calls out in one of our focus areas, you know, sustainability, and that's to renew our natural environment, to ensure sustainability for future generations. So I have a concern whether or not this, that one time was or was not a preservation area or whatever it was. It was obviously for the last 30-plus years looked at in that, in that manner, because there was, there was a retention pond on there, there's a, you know, that they had to use for, for the, when they, you know, it's for the runoff that's in that property. So, you know, at some, at some point, everybody was well aware that that was a preservation. And, and, you know, I think what we all try to do up here is look out for the greater good of the community. And when we start looking at the greater good of this community, obviously, we've all up here received many, many emails. And first, can I also say, you guys are more than welcome to come to any other meeting. We're, we're open here three times a month. We would love to see all of you here at that point, too. I know everybody's busy, but I do respect, though, very much the fact, though, that you guys have been able to come out and discuss this tonight, as well as at the planning board, and all of the emails that we received. So. So, you know, I absolutely respect what Walker Ford is trying to do. I think, though, that, again, when we start looking at the total impact to the city of Largo, I think it's going to impact that neighborhood in a significant way. There's many homeowners back there that would be impacted by what could be a parking lot or what we're assuming would be a parking lot. And that's, you know, something I absolutely have to look at. So, and then I also look at some other issues, you know. This might not be, right now, it's not in the coastal high hazard area, but absolutely abuts it. And that's, you know, this year, it might not be in the coastal high hazard. And I absolutely believe that in the next four or five years, it probably will be in the coastal high hazard. So, then you have to start looking at the impact that that's going to have as far as having, whether it's impervious or pervious surface, right in our coastal high hazard area. So, you know, we're taking a lot of, the city of Largo is making a lot of effort to try to be a better organization when it comes to sustainability. I think we're making a concerted effort towards that. And I want to be, you know, definitely help us move in that direction. So, for right now, that's all I've got. And let me try to organize my notes a little bit better here, and we'll maybe come back to something later. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question about other privately owned, are there other privately owned parcels in the city that have a future land use of preservation that you can think of?
There are a few. None that come to mind at the moment.
All right. You know, one thing that I think is important to note, that this is a future land use map. We call it future land use for a reason, not, we don't use the word zoning, because what exists there is not necessarily what we, what is the future land use would allow. And that happens throughout the city. So, the fact that there's a retention pond there now, and it's been future land use since it's been in the city are two different things to me. Because it's, to me, it's a little bit irrelevant what the county allowed them to do under preservation before it became into the city or before it was moved into the city. In fact, I'm happy to grandfather the fact that there's a land or a water treatment facility, stormwater treatment facility, in an area that we wouldn't necessarily allow it. But future land use is for future development, and that's kind of the way I look at this. I, we're talking about the Missing Links property. I didn't agree with the changing of that land use when it was all one parcel, for a myriad of reasons that are different than this thing. And I think that when I look at an individual parcel that's looking to change a future land use of their parcel, whether it's partial or complete, and the reason they're doing it is generally for benefit to them. I don't have a problem doing that if there's not a significant impact to the surrounding communities. And clearly, there is. I mean, my inbox would agree with me that there's significant impact. And some of it might be perceived, and some of it, some of the emails probably came from farther away, but there's certainly a significant impact to our community, let alone potentially the adjacent ecosystems and that type of stuff. So, it's a challenge for me to see, I kind of agree, it's a challenge for me to see that this really complies with all of our, with all of our comprehensive plan, for some of the reasons that Commissioner Robinson said. So, I'm having a lot of trouble understanding why or how we could support this. I know that wasn't a question, but I started with a question. So, Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, I was just going to make basically some of the same comments. First and foremost, I really appreciate the way this whole discussion has happened. There's been a lot of communication with the city, as my inbox would also attest to. But I think it's important to recognize also that Mr. Walker owns a very successful business in our city, and we're proud of our long association with him. We're happy for his success. But like other comments that we've heard up here, we have to balance that against the impact and our stated objectives when it comes to sustainability and the environment and so forth. So, I, too, am struggling. I want Mr. Walker to be successful, continue to be successful. I'm glad that he's in a position where he needs to store more inventory, because all these things are good things. But I balance that against the needs of the citizens in the neighborhood immediately adjacent, and I'm kind of where you are, Mayor, on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
After being, hearing everything, Rick, why do you still feel this is best, that staff, the information's presented, does your staff still feel that this is best? And with what was presented by, I believe, Mr. Richard, the challenges, the staff's views, what are your comebacks at what he presented to us tonight?
Sure, let me kind of start a little bit, take a step back. And when a application for a future land use map amendment is submitted to the city, it is staff, planning staff's responsibility to evaluate the application that's presented, the expert information that's been provided, such as the environmental assessment that was provided by their consulting firm, the conditions of the existing site, the surrounding areas and the land uses, and then look at the policy implications in the comprehensive plan, which does cover land use. It covers sustainability. It covers natural resources, stormwater. It covers economic development. And so, there are a gamut of policies that address everything from mitigating impact to neighboring properties, encouraging local business to expand, and providing, you know, sustainable options so that as we grow and develop, we are, you know, sustaining our natural resources. So, evaluating that application, what's been presented to us in this case, staff met with the applicant, like we always do with a pre-application meeting. They had proposed to change the preservation land use based on the environmental analysis that they provided, demonstrating that they would not be impacting natural resources. And as stated in the staff report, the designation, the preservation designation as defined says that it applies to those areas that are now characterized or appropriate for characterization as environmental or natural resources worthy of preservation, such as habitat or endangered and threatened species, and areas of environmental significance. These features will frequently be found in random or irregular patterns interspersed among uses in the other land use designations. Development of these areas is limited to passive recreation or accessory uses such as docks, boardwalks, gazebos, and picnic shelters. So, using that description of what, how preservation is defined, evaluating the existing conditions, which was based on a qualified expert's opinion of the impact area, staff, you know, had to make an assessment of policy, and the comp plan is sometimes a balance. It's not always, you know, every single policy, you have to check a box, yes. So, balancing that, when we originally met with the applicant, they asked for 4.6 acres to convert to residential office retail, which is larger than what the final application ended up being because of the discussion that we had, recognizing that they may be encroaching too much and not preserving enough of the preserved lands that their expert witness identified as having those environmental features that meet our definition of preservation. So, they did reduce the proposed area of change by 1.71 acres. That also came, at the same time, County Ford Pinellas staff, who would assess the countywide plan map amendment if this were to move forward, was in that meeting. And the countywide policy does say strongly discourage the conversion of preservation or open space. It does not say deny. We felt that we discouraged, you know, a larger area from being changed. My impression was that county staff felt the same way. And acknowledging buffers to the adjacent properties, we looked at what is a community standard in our CDC for an appropriate buffer between two potentially incompatible uses that would need to mitigate their externalities. The largest buffer in that area that we would require through a site plan review process is 50 acres. Fifty feet, I'm sorry, 50 feet of a landscape buffer. So, looking at the existing conditions, there is a 50-foot, 55 approximately, foot swath of preservation that would remain between the subject area that's being impacted and the adjacent property. And additionally, the land use residential office retail also is a less intense commercial use. Commercial general is the most intensive. So, we do evaluate the scale of intensity and density, and take that into consideration of our recommendation, as well as the fact that this would still have to go through any type, any development would have to go through a site plan review process, at which time lighting, landscaping, stormwater management, and those items would be addressed to meet our standards. The stormwater vaulting that the applicant has spoken about, of course, that's not part of this. They'd have to get the land use first to get to that level, but at site plan review, they would have to get their stormwater facility permitted by the stormwater management district. If they cannot get it permitted, they wouldn't be able to develop. So, you know, the few things that were mentioned, lighting, there are standards in the code. Lighting is not to exceed a certain amount of foot candles. It's supposed to be pointed down and shielded, so it doesn't go out horizontally and spill out to adjacent properties. Landscaping is a requirement to, of course, you know, screen and vegetate, you know, that area, so it's not just all asphalt, and so forth. So, you know, there is a process, then, in certain standards that the city has deemed appropriate, that if it were to develop, that would be in place to address those issues through a thorough development review process.
One last question. I remember watching, I watched the planning board meeting twice, just to catch everything. I do believe that was presented there that someone spoke about that there was a flyover, maybe, possibly, that kind of got this area coded as a preservation on accident. Is anything into that, or what? I just have a hard time wrapping my head around it took 32 years to come around to this.
So, when land use was designated countywide, it was designated throughout the whole county. And oftentimes, that designation was done by a windshield survey or an aerial flyover, looking at aerials and making some assumptions about, you know, what that area is. So, I could see how 30-some, 40 years ago, looking at an aerial, there may be a rough approximation of where a natural feature is. You know, our technology and our ability to determine those areas is a lot more sophisticated today. And, you know, the purpose for showing the countywide map and the preservation area is to show the natural contours of the other areas that are designated preservation. And what's unique about this site is the shape of the preservation is right angles and straight lines, which is somewhat different to the other areas that are designated preservation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm making an assumption here, but I guess I'll do it in the form of a question. So, the 1.71 additional acres that was initially proposed, did that follow the scientist's line of the water, of the waterway, basically? Where was that extra 1.71 acres?
They were proposing to go almost all the way to the jurisdictional wetland line.
That's okay.
They pulled it back. They excluded the swift mud requires a 25-foot buffer from a jurisdictional wetland line. They excluded that, and they excluded additional areas, including to the south, there's a, and I mentioned in my presentation, a drainage ditch that has a county easement over it that runs along the southwest and the southern boundary of the property. So, they excluded that as well, after our conversation.
And to be clear, the 50-foot maximum required buffer would be if this property was already something like ROR or commercial general, not preservation?
Right.
So, that buffer would apply to if the property was, and they were developing, coming in for a development agreement or...
Correct. Your typical site plan review, you know, regardless of the land use, you know, if there's a required buffer that is on the developing property side, they have to set aside whatever that designated width is and plant it according to our CDC standards.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I don't see Commissioner Finger. Commissioner Hulk?
Yes, I just wanted to say to Mr. Walker that I was not attacking you in any way, shape, or form. I'm just one of those people that just, not that I don't like change, but I just feel like when it affects a lot of people that live in the city of Largo, and I understand that your business is in the city of Largo, and we appreciate that. But I was, I just want to let you know, I was not attacking you in any way, shape, or form, or accusing you, or I don't know how I exactly came across as far as asking about the annexations. But I just was in my head thinking, oh, did I, did that come out wrong or right? Or, but if you took any offense at you, I just wanted to apologize to you for that. Thank you.
And I'll say, I've always been very impressed with everybody from the Walker family that I've met. And I think I'm very, you know, I've driven a Ford F-150 for 20 years, so I'm a Ford guy. But I certainly appreciate the business that you have here in the city, and I appreciate everything you've done for the community as well. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. So, I guess my question would, is when it comes to this plan, is... So, I mean, obviously, I understand Mr. Walker has a business plan, and this parking lot or whatever proposed would be part of that plan. I have no way of knowing what it would be, and I can tell you that, as, you know, there's no way he's going to elevate any type of parking in that parking lot. I mean, it's just, the cost of that compared to a surface-level parking is just astronomical. So, I mean, that suggestion, as a, you know, somebody who runs a business is crazy. But, so, we're okay. Thank you, though. So, but my question was really, when it comes to the buffer, and I understand, you know, everybody that lives in Kent Place and in that area obviously can hear what's going on in Walker Ford. You know, you're not that far from US 19. I'm well aware of that. I've actually been to the property that we're talking about. I believe the property owner was there. I worked at Largo Feed for over 20 years. I was, yeah, I used to deliver to, yeah, I've been in that house many, many, many times. So, I'm well aware of, you know, the situation that everybody is in there. So, I guess, you know, has there been any type of, tried to have any type of compromise as to, you know, expanding the buffer or trying to, yeah, it's just a compromise? I mean, personally, I'm not a fan of paving over any type of open space. a fan of paving over any type of open space, especially when it, when we're talking about it, where it's located at right now. So I've just questioned as to if there's been any type of try, you know, compromise in any way.
I'll answer first, but I believe the applicant wants to speak to that. You know, staff did, as I described in our pre-application meeting with the applicant, did discuss their original proposed area, and then they did, based on that initial pre-application meeting, adjust their proposed area, reduce it. But I'll, the applicant would
And I think, though, that was because, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, the way I read the present, or the agenda, and my mo anyhow, was because the way it was originally proposed, we didn't believe it would get past, you know, some of the other steps that had to get through, maybe not even through here, but other B O C C or whoever it might be. That's the way I read it, and maybe I'm wrong. But that's the way, that's the, the way I read it is that's why that change was made, and why it was presented to us as is. So my question is more of, past that point, is there any, you know, the residents of Kent Place, is there any happy medium here? And maybe there's not. I don't have any idea. And again, you know, my, I tend to lean towards what's going to be, you know, who's just going to serve the greater good. And, you know, I just question as to how that was kind of led to where we are now.
Would you like to hear something?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Katie Cole, representing the owner. Prior to the planning board, I did reach out to Ms. Hoskin and Mr. Gearing to invite a conversation to understand what their concerns were after they had reached out to staff. Staff provided their information and indicated they did, they did not return that, respond to that. Ms. Oaks was also included because she had reached out to me previously. At the planning board, Mr. Gearing said to me specifically, you see what the neighbors want. They want 350 feet. I think, to your point, what is the appropriate buffer? I think it was very obvious from the standpoint of the staff and the applicant, that there was an existing 55-foot buffer plus an unimproved right-of-way to the adjacent property. Your code through its site plan process requires zero buffer between residential and preservation, and requires approximately 50 feet between preservation and ROR. So 55 feet plus an unimproved right-of-way, since it would meet that comprehensive development code, I don't think there was any thought, from our standpoint, that it was an inappropriate ask. To Mr. Perez's standpoint or comment, yes, the original proposal was to change everything, consistent with the jurisdictional line, because that's what the countywide rules reflect. The countywide rules specifically define preservation as undulating with that jurisdictional line. After talking with Forward Pinellas and the staff, they came back and said, because it has been unimproved for so long, could you bring that back and make it tighter, and only change the area specifically on top of the stormwater pond? And that was the application that was submitted. And if I may, just a moment, with Mr. Holmes, included in the applicant's PowerPoint deck and included in the staff report, is that same paragraph that Ms. Hoskin's presented. And in the applicant's PowerPoint deck, it clearly shows that the existing pond in the proposed development is exactly on top of where it was originally permitted in 1987. And the proposed change on the map does not go any farther outside of that original permitted area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
Do you have a motion?
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to disapprove ordinance number 2021-24 on first reading, and I guess you want to schedule a second meeting, Alan? Just, okay. That's the motion. I move to disapprove ordinance number 2021-24.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could you pull the board, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Finger?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulk?
Yes.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, and thank you to everybody that's here today. Next, we will have items from the DA's, Mr. Zimmert.
Thank you. That means that we did okay, I guess.
Commissioner Finger?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for being with us. Sorry about the technical glitches, but we could see you, and see when you wanted to chime in. So thanks for participating. Commissioner Holmes?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Robinson?
Top of second, zero zero. Just an update there.
What are you talking about?
I'm just saying, in case anybody's paying attention. No, seriously, the, nice heck, Mayor. Thank you again to everybody that came out tonight. And again, we are open besides the nights that we have these contentious issues. We'd love to see everybody out here, and maybe we can talk about the budget next time or something more fun. So thank you again to everybody, and see y'all in a couple weeks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hulk?
Ditto on Commissioner Robinson. Go raise. Thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, just to repeat, kind of, once again, there's no villains in this discussion we just had. Staff was doing their job. The residents did their job. Mr. Walker is doing what he thought was right by his property, and that's why we make the big bucks. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
This past Saturday, I attended Shred Fest at, did I take you thunder?
No, man. There's a bug finder. I apologize. But I've been trying to get him for a couple minutes now, so. I took my opportunity. Sorry. I apologize.
Don't end up with a fly on your head. It was a good turnout at Shred Fest. Everybody was very, very appreciative that we were doing it. Good turnout. I didn't get the last count, but when I did leave at like 10:30-ish, they had already 500 cars that had gone through there. So I looked forward, and they were looking forward to future ones. A resident did bring up maybe, possibly, in the future, doing a little bit of a later one, because there are people that work on the weekends and can't get out there from the 9 to 12 time. So maybe we can push it back a little later on the next one. I'm very appreciative to the staff that was there. They were very accommodating to our residents and to putting it on, and they are, do a great job every time I've been out there. The other one was, I went out to the Wood
Woodrow Park?
Woodrow Park. Yeah, and they were handing out plants.
300 of them.
Yeah.
I was there before you got
You were. I was over at Shred Fest.
I was there before you were there.
But that was a really nice thing. I've already gotten a couple of residents that have said that they've planted it, and they really appreciate the city doing something like that. And they were very impressed with the presentation of the compost bin that was out there. They got to see that, and they were told that you need to sign up quick for it, because they were going. I think they had 500 of them and said, first come, first served. So, and on top of that, our staff was, did an awesome job, our fire department and sustainability group, by kind of moving people through. So that was really nice. They handed a bag, and they did a real cool project where they actually gave a bag of information to one resident, and they said, take one, and give it, your goal is to give it to another resident. So I thought that community sharing of a plant and a bag, telling you all about what's going on in the city of Largo, was an awesome approach to our residents and getting the word out. So I thank them. I thank the city manager for getting our staff to get back on Shred Fest and
I received my compost bin today. Super excited about it.
I don't follow sports, so I can be here all night. So.
All right. Thank you. I wanted to say, go raise, and also, happy birthday to my son Sawyer. And remind everybody up here that we have a special meeting on Thursday at noon. Zoom meeting for a picture?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a reminder. And
That's all my challenge is all about.
And that's all I had. Mr. Schubert?
Just a couple of quick things. We ultimately had over 800 vehicles go through Shred Fest on Saturday.
Not the vehicles, the car or the paper that was in the vehicle.
Yeah, yes, yes. That's true. We let people take the vehicles home with them, yes. The other thing is, this evening, the Bel Air Town Commission is taking public input on a petition that was circulated in their community to close Point Seattle Road at Rosary Road at the Pinellas Trail. And I just wanted to let you know that our fire chief and our assistant city manager were both representing the city of Largo at that meeting, and I'll report back to you later as to what happens with that.
So, can I, can I add on to that a little bit?
Yeah.
So I spoke to the city manager in Bel Air. I spoke to one of their commissioners, and as well as their, I forget what his title is. He's Public Work Director over, and I think the biggest thing, and I don't know how aware the residents are over there, and I'm sure this, I know this is going to be discussed at the meeting tonight, but if they do plan on closing that road down, there has to be a turnaround there. So, at the trail, which, there's no room. I mean, it has, I think, from what I was told, it's a 50-foot diameter turnaround, and there's, they just, there's no room to do that. And we would have to do the same. Or, I don't know how that works, but there's, at some point, there would have to be some way to turn around, because it would be some sort of gate or something there. So I'm sure that will be mentioned at the meeting, and I was made sure to, when I spoke to the commissioner over there, and, you know, expressed our feelings. Spoke on behalf of the commission, you're welcome. And, but yeah, that's a concern. My dry cleaner's over there. I gotta take that road as often as possible, so.
Not sure I'd worry about, I'd be worried about.
Yeah, I
Real truth comes out.
I think it comes from a concern about traffic going fast down the roads, and I would, I mean, it's the same issue that we are trying to deal with in some roads in our city, and designing a road where it doesn't feel like, you don't feel like driving so fast is the best answer long-term, not closing access.
Their city manager was in, you know, same, same
Yeah, everybody I talked to over there is basically.
Yes. Our staff and their staff are in complete agreement on this issue.
Correct. Yes.
On that thing, Thursday, that special Zoom meeting?
Yes.
Any special instructions for that, other than two men?
You better have the right background, is what the
You should look like Santa Claus.
Yeah, too late.
Doing well. No, other than the background or something.
I'd have to dye mine white, John.
I mean, is that all, it's, all of us on one background, or each?
So, full disclosure here, I guess we're going to do a Zoom Christmas card.
Yeah, well, I knew all that.
Yeah, and so
Ruin it for everybody.
I know. We won't send them if they're upset about it.
All right, never mind.
So we're all going to be on one Zoom screen, just like Commissioner Finger, if you can wave to us, Commissioner Finger. She's delayed.
I withdraw the question.
And then everybody's going to have their background, and wear holiday attire, and we felt, some of us felt that it would be a really appropriate Christmas card for this year would be a Zoom meeting with holiday
Works for me.
Surrounds, and
I get it.
You know, wear, wear some Christmas stuff, just on the top, just from here up, really.
You know, some bad things happen with those kind of meetings.
And it shouldn't take that long.
No Santa Claus.
Any action items?
Oh, I had none.
Very good. Meeting's adjourned. Go raise.